I'm seven o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask that the city manager call roll.
Jim O'Nash?
Here.
Jeff Elsaff?
Here.
Jeff Hawes?
Here.
Benny Marqueson?
Here.
Justice Smith?
Here.
All right, appreciate that. I don't see Dr. Winsted for the prayer, okay. Hope all is well there, but am glad to know that we have pastors who are starting to sign up to do the prayer here. So, having that opening tonight, I would ask that we go ahead and bow our heads and join in silent prayer as we had before. Amen. Now please rise and join us in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to welcome everybody to your regularly scheduled meeting of your Bel Air City Council. Tonight is particularly exciting. We have our new AV pieces in place. This is something that council talks about doing for several months, actually, is really enhancing and improving our methods of communicating and reaching the citizens. So, we have new cameras. Hopefully, the pictures are clear soon. You know, still things that are still going to be coming, but in the near future, we'll be able to click on a tab on our website through social media and watch these meetings in live time. Of course, they'll still remain on YouTube and they're still on the cable channel. That's still happening. So, lots of new ways to enhance and get our meetings broadcast and out there. So, tonight is the first night for that, so we'll ask for grace with as they work out all the bugs, but I'm sure everything will be great. On the agenda this evening, we have a temp note. There's a couple of proclamations. We have a sale ordinance to look at. Want to vote on an alternate to join the CCUA. We're going to look at hiring an architect for the design phase of the master park. And got a sewer works. What are we doing there with the sewer works? I just was reading that, I'm sorry, for that. So, we'll work on that. An ordinance there. So, that is before us this evening. If anybody has any additions to the agenda. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second. Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Next, item seven is approval of our appropriations ordinance 18-21. It's a little bit higher this time around, $520,238.11 to be exact. $160,000 of that is for our debt service payment to the CCUA. So, that's why that is a little bit higher this evening.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve appropriations ordinance 18-21.
Oh, second.
First and second. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So, I have two proclamations this evening. Is there anyone in the audience here to represent Veterans Day or American Diabetes Month? Seeing none, I'll read these proclamations from the bench. Whereas, in the United States, nearly 24 million people, including 150,000 in Kansas, have diabetes, a serious disease with potentially life-threatening complications such as heart disease, stroke, blindness, kidney, kidney disease, and amputation. And whereas, an additional 57 million people in the United States are at risk for developing type 2 diabetes. And whereas, one out of every three children born today will face a future of diabetes if current trends continue. And whereas, an increase in community awareness is necessary to put a stop to the diabetes epidemic. Therefore, I, David Austin, Mayor, do hereby proclaim November as American Diabetes Month in the city of Bel Air. And I call upon all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to join the American Diabetes Association's movement to confront, fight, and most importantly, stop diabetes. Pass that. Pass that down to the city manager and city attorney, please. Whereas, Veterans Day has its origins in the November 11, 1918, Aramis, which brought World War I to a conclusion. Whereas, the Allied victory in World War I affirmed the strength of great nations acting together for high purposes. And whereas, the people of the United States caused, through their elected representatives, the designating of November 11 as a federal legal holiday, which in 1954 became officially known as Veterans Day. Whereas, Veterans Day continues to be celebrated and commemorated with solemn observances in honor of all Americans who have served their country in times of war and conflict. Whereas, the courage, honor, sacrifice, and dedication which veterans of the United States Armed Forces have displayed in the cause of justice, freedom, and democracy are most worthy of recognition. Now, therefore, I, David Austin, Mayor, do hereby call upon all citizens to commend Americans, veterans, and observe with solemn pride November 11, 2018, to be celebrated as Veterans Day. Pass that on as well. Citizens concerned, this is the time where we open it up to people in the audience who they want to speak about an agenda item. And I have three request items here, or request to speak forms in front of me, and I'll call them in order. Would ask that you come to the podium and state your name and your address and ask that you keep your comments to about three minutes. The first one is Joel Schroeder.
My name is Joel Schroeder. I live on 4805 North Pedro Hohepark. I recently received some really good news that we sold some land and therefore saved about $100,000 a year in savings that we don't have to put toward land. This is great news. We're finally digging out of this terrible, terrible hole the city of Bel Air put us in. And I hear, what are we going to do with this newfound $100,000 a year? Oh, I know. Let's go back into debt to build a park. I did some rough math, and I'm sure my numbers aren't perfect, but if we put that $100,000 towards the debt over the lifetime of the debt, at 100,000 years, we would pay about $450,000 less in interest alone. If we get a 10-year loan at about 3% interest, we are going to pay about $200,000 in interest. The bank must really, really love us. I do not understand why we are building a million, talking about building a million-dollar park when it's actually going to cost us something more like $1.6 million. We're not getting a very good return on our investment. When the city of Bel Air at some point decided to take a gamble, to take a risk, and buy a whole bunch of land, it set us back. Debt is back. And I know, I realize sometimes you have to have debt to get to where you want. But I do not understand, when we have sunk ourselves in such a big hole, we finally have a chance to dig our way out. Rather than continue to dig, we say, I know, let's go right back to what put us in trouble in the first place. We build a park. What if people come and build? Great. We build a park, and what if nobody builds? What if, when they built, when they bought the land, did you think what they thought would happen was, oh, I know, we'll never be able to sell this? Of course not. These are gambles. These are risks that I do not think the city of Bel Air should be taking. We should be more responsible and realize the power of compound interest.
Thank you. Next, I'll call Jim O'Reilly.
My name is Jim O'Reilly, and I live at 4760 North Batten. He could have written my piece. We, 15 years ago, we were buying land like drunken sailors, and we put ourselves into a real fiscal straitjacket. And here, we're seeing a little daylight. We have a little wiggle room now on the straitjacket. And what are we going to do with the money? Well, we're going to build a park. The traffic problem we have on Woodlawn Avenue is a problem that has to be dealt with soon and deeply. It's a need. The park is a want. And I think the council ought to be ratcheting up the priority on the traffic problems and ratcheting down the priority on the park. Thank you.
Next, I have Matt Schroder.
Hello. My name is Matt Schroder. I live at 5132 East Willow Point Road. I'm here to talk about the same thing these guys have mentioned. So, I'd like to congratulate you guys on getting this wiggle room, right? I'm sure you guys have worked really hard to sell the land, come up with some money. But I can certainly understand the urge to use that money and buy something now that we would all really like to have. But just like when my kids get a bunch of candy on Halloween, there's got to be some adults in the room that say, "Sorry, you can't eat all that now. There might be a better way to do it." And I'd like to suggest that rather than liberally spending this wiggle room that we've, you guys, have earned for the city, that instead we be a little bit more fiscally conservative, pay off the debt. Do something not, that's going to get these kids a splash pad now, but when these kids get done with college 15, 20 years from now, and they're thinking about moving back to Bel Air, are we still going to be talking about Woodlawn traffic problems? Are we still going to be talking about high water taxes, roads that need better maintained? Are we going to be in the same straitjacket that those who went before us put us in now? I think we can do better. I think that we can be the adults in the room, make a good decision, and invest in the future instead of mortgaging it. Thanks a lot.
Is there anyone else in the chambers that wishes to address council this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports, and we'll start with Councilman Elsaff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a report this evening. First of all, I just want to recap the Chisholm Creek Utility Authority meeting that we had on October 25. Just to give a little bit of context, I'm going to step back a few months. On January 26, the CCUA was presented with two concepts for the wastewater treatment plant. I mentioned back in that timeframe that the wastewater treatment plant is going to be reaching its, I guess, design capacity or design life within five years from now. It could be next year, it could be five years out. That's what the engineering estimate is. And so, there was a, there were two proposals of improvements on the treatment plant. And each, so there's two options. Each option had two phases. And the way they were set up, one phase is sort of a spend less money in Phase 1 earlier. But then, that involved potentially actually having to destroy parts of that first phase in order to complete the second phase. And the other, the other option was to spend more money upfront, which was more of a, I guess, do it right way the first time sort of approach. And, you know, we're looking at the future of what, what the cost will be to do this overhaul. So, on September 27, the CCUA agreed that option, the first option, which was the option to do the higher cost upfront, to not do the phase, not do the option 2 that involved potentially destroying a section of the first phase. And ultimately, it is the most efficient use of money, and the total cost was cheaper for the first option. So, that's the direction CCUA was going with that. And October 25, our meeting, we were presented with a proposal from MKEC, which was their estimate for the design costs of Phase 1. And at this point, it hasn't been voted on. This is just presented to the CCUA. So, we're, I guess, mulling it over and going through the process of evaluating this and trying to determine, should we, you know, the details and ins and outs of how to break up the cost, how to fund it, all of that is in work at the moment. And so, I just wanted to make sure that this council was up to speed on that. In the design proposal, the cost of the design was just shy of $1 million. The cost was $973,000. And the estimate for the construction of that phase was in the neighborhood of $8.5 million. Now, I'm presenting that in the context of that we need to start having discussions and start considering what our options are as a city for, how do we want to, do we want to support this, this proposal, this option? Do we want to look at other options? This is one particular design proposal that's before us. Again, it hasn't been voted on. We could look at, looking at getting other companies to come in and give their proposals for a similar work. But later this week, we're going to have a meeting to discuss with the city manager and city employees and members of the Bel Air component of the CCUA to just talk over where we're at on our costs, where we're at on our funding. And we basically, I basically want to get all options on the table for what we as a city can do for planning this wastewater treatment overhaul. That's, the CCUA sees it as this overhaul is going to come one way or another, hopefully later rather than sooner. But we need to engage in these discussions and kind of iron out, get the lay of the land on this thing so that we're not surprised if there were some sort of catastrophic breakdown or some emergency at the wastewater treatment plant. We want to be at the point where we have a design or at least a plan in place, and perhaps a plan that has, you know, Plan A, Plan B-type, type thought process. But, so, that's where we're at, at the CCUA. So, we're in discussion of this one design. And I just want to make sure this council is up to speed on that. And I do intend to, after our meeting later this week, to write a more formal report so that we have all the numbers on the table, so that everybody in this council can know exactly what we're facing at as far as a timeline, numbers, costs, all that. Because I want to make sure that, as a council, we're on board with what things are like at the treatment plant. So, that's, that's the essence of my report there. That's all I have at the moment. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I have no report this evening.
Councilmember Martine?
Well, I attended the Fall Festival. It was packed with children and adults. It was a beautiful day. Everybody seemed to have a lot of fun. And they especially liked voting on the pumpkins that were decorated. Of course, Mickey Mouse didn't win, but they all had a lot of fun at it. And I'd just like to thank the committee for putting the event on. They worked hard. They were all, most, I saw almost all of them there early in the morning until late at night. And the staff that worked, Mr. Lasher and his wife worked the car show. And there were some really beautiful cars there. I'd like to have one, but there is no way. Also, I'd like to, this might be stepping on Mr. Lasher's toes. The Taste of Italy, put on by the Lions Club, is going to be this Saturday at the Gospel Ascendee Church. At, I think it starts four to-
Four to seven.
Four to seven. It's $10 a person. I've attended every year, and the food is really, really good. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. And I'll just piggyback on that to the, this Taste of Italy on Saturday. The proceeds from Lions Club, they give right back to the community, which is why we're talking about it up here from the bench. Councilmember Benash?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to do the kudos to Westar for getting the lights working on 45th Street and Woodlawn. It's awesome. You can see things around there now. And so, really appreciate that effort. Thank you.
Councilmember Hobbs?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo Councilmember Martine's sentiments about the Fall Fest. I thought it was a great thing for the city. I do want to just point out, we do still have some openings for volunteers for the Community Development Committee. If anybody's interested in volunteering for the city, that would be greatly appreciated. That's all I have, Mayor.
Appreciate it. I have no formal report tonight, but do you want to appreciate Councilmember Martine mentioning the Taste of Italy coming up? Just a couple of things I want to just reflect on for a minute. Polls closed just a minute ago, a few minutes ago here, and we had a steady line here in Bel Air. And I did my heart good. I really appreciate the fact that so many people took the time to vote in a midterm election. This is, our freedom is something that so many of us take for granted here in this country. And I also think the citizens are coming out tonight and sharing their opinions. That's what makes this country great, is that we're able to do that, whether we agree or disagree. We're able to have that dialogue. Here, in a couple of hours, the county commission, I know District 1 will for sure have a new county commission as our current one is retiring. But the other portion, I think it's, is it District 4, coverage part of Bel Air, has a contested race this evening too. So, for that, we'll have a new governor. And I know if you've watched TV or listened to the radio, we've heard how awful people are and then how wonderful they are 30 seconds later. And I never thought I'd say this, but I miss the days of hearing that I need a new mattress or if I've been injured in an auto accident, who to call. But we can look forward to that. I appreciate the comments too about Fall Festival. That's something where, I'm glad we were all there. Appreciate Mr. Lasher hand-making the trophies that were presented there. And it was definitely a fun-packed place. And that's one of the things we're talking about, that we're outgrowing those areas for that. So, for that, just again, thank you to all of those who participate in the meetings here and also for those of you who took the time to vote. For that, we're going to move on to city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to talk to you about the League's policy statement. Just as you all set a vision for each year and what you want to focus on, the League does too. They recently put out their policy statement that includes their action agenda, which prioritizes the legislation they'll be focusing on. You can get a copy of that through your League email. But I did want to point out Home Rule, Tax Lit, Repeals, and Internet Sales Tax collections seem to be three areas that they're focusing on that I think Bel Air for sure would be interested in participating in legislation. I'll bring you more information as they decide how the legislation they support will ultimately look. Also, one other topic, the Supreme Court put together, the Kansas Supreme Court, put together an ad hoc committee that reviewed how municipal courts are handling bond assessments for defendants. So, when someone gets arrested and they are arrested under a municipal charge and they come to, they go to jail, the courts wanted municipal courts to get more proactive about how they handle those defendants. They consider it a big statewide issue, and they do see some constitutional concerns in it. So, we were all very actively listening to their feedback in their, in the report they provided. Essentially, their report focused on municipalities reviewing our bonding practices to make sure that we're not holding defendants who are, I'm sorry, holding defendants who are poor disproportionately. So, looking at how the jailing of economically disadvantaged persons works. And that's kind of a unique way to look at a system. Bel Air looks at criminal history when we're setting our bond practices. But we did meet, and we did review the findings of the Supreme Court. And I just would report to council that we are doing most of the recommended practices, best practices that they're itemizing. Communication between the court clerk, arresting officers, prosecutors, and myself is really good in making sure that no one sits in the system too long, making sure that each case is individually assessed as the Supreme Court recommends. Our courts provide alternatives to driver's license suspensions to increase the people getting back on the road so they don't get trapped into any kind of system. And we offer alternative payment options and timelines. I know the council approved a credit card payments system that would allow people to pay online and modernizing our technology. That will feed into meeting this requirement that the Supreme Court is setting for municipalities. So, just overall, we have uniform fines, so we're not just picking poor people and assessing them more fines. I don't see anybody doing that, but we do have practices that prevent that from happening. So, I wanted to report to council that we are ahead of whatever issues the Supreme Court sees across the state on that. So, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Appreciate the report. I'm glad to know that we've got a lot of issues that can handcuff us and tell us what to do and what we can't do and can't do. So, glad to hear that it's being discussed. Anybody have any questions for our city attorney? Hearing none, we'll move to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Someone had mentioned Woodlawn this evening, so I wanted to give a project status update. Of course, MKEC is working on the design from 37th to 45th, including the intersection at 45th. Staff actually met with them last week, and in council's packet is the actual report. But just for the citizens, they've started with some concepts of lanes. They did, some of their data was corrupted, and it's primarily the data they collected south of the railroad tracks. And so, they're doing some more surveys. So, if anybody sees people out there with surveys, that's what they're doing. They're collecting some additional data. They've determined the preferred roadway profile in relation to drainage to make sure that, because the ditches will go away, there'll be curb and guttering out there. So, they're working on that, looking at Trib 7 as well. They are, have started to lay out different lane configurations. And those plans also include walking and biking paths on both sides, or at least walking paths on both sides. They're working on preliminary storm sewer systems. So, we have the sewer main that runs down 45th, or as Woodlawn, as well as the water main. They're going to be assessing those conditions and possibly, at the time of road construction, we may replace some of those, because that's a good time to do it during construction. They're hoping to come to council with the presentation in December. If not, it'll be January for sure. And they will lay out the different concepts that they've got, the different costs, the budget costs for that. And then they'll go to the public with, for input, and then back to council for a final decision on the concept of the intersection as well, the intersection at 45th and Woodlawn, as well as the road design itself. Did want to mention that next Monday, November 12, city offices will be closed in observance of Veterans Day. And did want to thank the tree board. They acquired 35 trees, ornamental trees, at no charge for the- They acquired 35 trees, ornamental trees, at no charge for the city. And Public Works, Parks Department has picked those up and will be planting them around town. So, we appreciate that, and this is a good time to plant some trees. So, thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate it. It's good to hear about the start on Woodlawn, just to remind folks at home, this is going to be a long process and we're long, we've been talking about this for a couple of years. And just to remind people at home that Wampo is paying, is it 80% of this whole project? Just to remind people of that. And so, right now, I look forward to hearing their report back to us and recommendations on lanes and width and all that good stuff so we can really start to see that project take hold. With that, we're going to move, we're going to move on to Item A, Under Ordinances, Resolutions, and Final Actions. The first night, first thing, excuse me, is a temp note resolution. Phase one improvements of the Villas at Prestwick, those are beginning, so money is needed to pay for the construction. The city is issuing a one-year temp note to fund the project. Want to point out that the temp note can be refinanced at any time during these first 365 days. Or it can actually be extended additional years if the developer agrees to that, and the city as well. The temp note then becomes a permanent general obligation bond, a GO bond, if you will. At the end of the temp note, at that point, that's when special assessments are spread to the property owners, so, to pay back. And that's where, so due to the size of this temp note and the amount of reserves and everything that's involved in all of that, the city at Bel Air is actually purchasing the notes and is charging a 2.5% interest on that based, and that's based on the current bond market. So, I know this is a long, convoluted, big process, long way to get construction started and then pay back the city. So, that is what is before us this evening, if anybody has any questions.
Mr. Mayor, I motion that we approve a resolution authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of general bond obligation temporary notes, Series 2018A of the City of Bel Air, Kansas, providing for the levy and collection of an annual tax, if necessary, for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on said notes as they become due, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. First and second. Any other questions or comments, discussion? If you're in, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item B is an ordinance. This is a sale ordinance. The PBC, Public Building Commission, met before the meeting tonight to approve the sale of eight feet, so, of Lot 2, Block C. The Sunflower Commerce Park, the sale is to the Empire Wall. This is due to a miscalculation of the survey. The price is $2,600 based on current lot pricing. So, if there's any questions, I see that Ann is here, or anybody has any questions of that? Again, we sell an additional eight feet. Every bit helps.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve an ordinance authorizing the sale and disposition of certain property under a lease between the City of Bel Air, Kansas, and the City of Bel Air, Kansas Public Building Commission, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
First and second. Since it is an ordinance, it does call for roll call vote. Jim Benage?
Yes.
Jeff Elsoff?
Aye.
Jeff Hawes?
Aye.
Betty Martine?
Aye.
Justin Smith?
Aye.
Okay. Moving along, so it passes 5-0. Item C is a CCUA alternate appointment. Currently, Betty Martine is our lone alternate to the CCUA. Councilmember Elsoff, myself, Servon, along with Ken Lee, former council member. So, with meetings on the fourth Thursday at 4:30, there's times where one or two of us need further things. So, it's good to have an alternate. This is something Park City does as well, and so, kind of make sure that Bel Air is represented well at all meetings. We, I said, so we have alternates. And when was it? Yeah, Ellie resigned, I think, with the summer after a number of years. I really appreciate all that she did, but certainly think that we need to have a second alternate. David Floyd, Betty's shaking her head. David Floyd responded to our invitation. He is involved in the city. He sits on our Planning Commission. I think some of you have attended the Planning Commission. This is a man who knows what is going on in the city and pays attention to a lot of our infrastructure needs and is a wonderful appointment, an excellent appointment to the Planning Commission. And I'm excited and appreciate the fact that he's willing to be an alternate to the CCUA. And so, I would ask that you approve that appointment this evening.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make the motion to confirm the mayor's appointment of David Floyd as an alternate to the CCUA board.
I'll second.
First and two seconds. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item D is consideration proposals for Phase One design of a new public park gathering space as outlined in the Park Master Plan developed by LK Architecture. And this is something we talked about quite a bit at our last workshop, where we have the two proposals. And again, this is something, you know, just for the first design phase, looking at about $12,000 on that to get the information back on what costs are going to be. And certainly, I just want to assure everybody that that point, you know, citizen input will be received before we move forward with anything. This is something, you guys know I've been pushing for. Developers have told us that would be a good thing, so. But tonight, asking for a motion to approve one of the two design firms that responded to our RFQ.
Mr. Mayor, I have some comments I'd like to share.
Please.
So, I just wanted to offer a little bit of perspective. And, you know, a little bit of my opinion on this issue. Especially since this evening, we heard from three citizens who shared their concerns about the fact that we're looking at the Central Park plan and contrasting that with the city's debt and where we, where we sit as a city overall. And I guess where I start from is I see it as our job up here on the council to, number one, be on the outlook for the, what is best overall for the, for the city. And in terms of everyone as a collective group, as our community. And so, first of all, I just want to say that, you know, the decisions we make up here and the numbers that are run before us and all the things, we try to do our due diligence. And I know I can speak for everybody up here in saying that we're, what we're trying to do is what is best for the city overall, for all residents. And so, that's, I guess that's perspective number one. Second of all, I am definitely sensitive to, and I hear residents who share the, or who emphasize the fact that, hey, we've, we've got all this land debt. It's millions and millions of dollars that we have in debt that has to be paid off, that the city is obligated to. And, you know, if we look at what that actually is, so, the debt service payments we have, it's 2018 now. If we just make the debt payments as is forecast for the amortization for the bonds, the last debt payment is expected to be made sometime in 2034. So, that's 16 years from now. Now, excuse me. There is an option we have as a city. We could do nothing but just sit on our laurels and just wait and just have all money go to the land debt and just sit tight and pay that off. That's certainly something we could do. We could not spend any money on anything new. And I realize there's a tier of priorities, right? We have, we have essential things in the city that are sort of, you know, are tier-one items, like water delivery and sewer maintenance. And then we have things like our roads. And parks are definitely in that, a different tier than that. It's not an essential of the city in the same sense that the other stuff is. So, I, I know that, I see that and I get that. But there's, there are, there is an argument to be made that, that looking at, and what we're looking at here today, what we're considering is voting on a proposal to move forward with designing Phase One of potentially four phases of a master park plan. So, this is, this is the first of many steps in a sequence of events here. So, we're not going to be voting on spending $4 million on a park right now. That's, that's not what's before us. What's before us is the earliest stages of what we have a plan. You know, the city has this master plan for community growth, and it does include this concept park. Now, the design that exists currently is very initial. It's not set in stone. We're not even voting on, well, I can see up on the screen right now, the, I guess, the initial design. We're not even voting for that per se. We're, we're going to be entering into a period of time where we're going to be taking input from citizens. We're going to be working with, if, if we decide to go with one of these companies here, we're going to be looking at working with them and going through the design process to get something that resembles kind of what we see in the initial design. But, so this is, this is the early stage design of one of four phases. And, you know, I guess if we're, if we're going to be a city that just sits for 16 years and doesn't spend any money on, on looking at designing a new park and heading down that road of building a new park, you know, there's other non-essential things that we could do. And are we, you know, I mean, we could, we could spend less money on grass maintenance and stuff like that. And, you know, I just wonder, I guess, when I look at problems like this, there's, I'll go start with the two extremes, and then there's always hanging in the balance in the middle is somewhere where we need to find a, I guess, a common ground or compromise. So, the extreme case I laid out is where we make absolutely no effort to develop anything new in the city for 16 years, and we just pay off the debt as it's scheduled. That, that is, that's an option. I view that as the extreme option of just paying down the debt and doing nothing else and holding ourselves to that. We could do that. The other side of that extreme is just taking out, you know, maxing out all the potential debt that we could get to take out loans for, for, for more land or, and even more lavish park than what we're looking at. Or, you know, we could spend money like crazy, just, you know, and, and obviously, we're not, we're not doing that either. We need to find that balance of, can we commit to our debt payments and obligations that we have? And, you know, this is a dynamic city. There are people that move into Bel Air, that move out of Bel Air. There are houses continually being built. The city is growing. The economy moves. It's not a fixed state, so. And if our priority is selling land, we want to, we want to sell as much land as possible to truncate that time that we pay off the land debt. I mean, presumably, if we could, if we could sell all the land that we owe payments on, we would, you know, escape that debt and fiscally be as, you know, in, in the black as possible. So, there is an idea that, you know, the mayor has a vision for this city. And part of that vision that he is pursuing and that we have to evaluate is, since the city does own this land, and it's not something that, we don't have a customer right now that's going to buy the land for what we owe on it right now. If that were the case, if someone were to have that, we would certainly consider doing that as soon as possible. But we don't have that. We don't, we can't sell off all the land in one fell swoop. So, what do we do in the meantime? Well, the mayor's vision involves, based on his research in terms of looking to pursue businesses and developers, is, does the city have a natural gathering point? Does it have a gathering spot that's a magnet for people from the community to come in and, and do stuff at? And we kind of have that at the rec center, but it's not, there's no, the rec center is in the older place of Bel Air where there's no expansion, no growth is going to happen around that area. We do have our other parks, and our parks are great. But in looking to what the mayor is envisioning, this Central Park is a big key to that, that the land that's to our northwest, that we, that is to the north and west of, or excuse me, the north and east of City Hall. At the workshop, we were shown, you know, the initial design plans back from 2002 showed something along the lines of this area being some type of a park that would be sort of a focal point. Now, the term downtown, should we develop a downtown? That, that's been tossed around. And in the 2016 community survey, Bel Air residents were asked about that. And the idea of setting up a downtown was not something that was very favorably, I don't remember the exact percentage of that, but it was, it was well below 50%. So, what I see in this vision and the vision the mayor has shared is not developing a downtown. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about the, a park area being a focal point of potential other kind of commercial and retail businesses potentially could come in and, and, or it could be potentially residential-type areas as well. So, you know, we're not, we're not settled on that. But the idea is, would having a new park in this area that's on the border of a lot of the land that we want to sell, help sell that land faster by being this natural gathering point? That's, that's part of where we're, to the point now where we're considering that, that is, if we spend some money to get the ball rolling on the park, you know, will that be, you know, obviously, we don't know what's going to happen in the future. But it is taking on a little bit of risk. But is it, you know, we heard a couple comments or characterizations of, should we, should we put money into fixing woodlawn versus a park? And I don't, I don't know that that's entirely fair of a comparison, because what we're talking about is really doing both. We're not sacrificing money that we would spend on woodlawn for a park. That's, that's not what we're really talking about. And I don't, I don't, I don't see this, this issue as, as, as being that easy. Because it's possible that if we, you know, if we, if we set this gathering point, this park area, and if we can, if we can do it in a, in a way that, that is high value, that is efficient, that is a good use of, use of our money, so that that land could potentially- potentially sell faster, that we could get out of that land debt sooner. That, that, that's one of the big arguments for doing this is that the desire to sell land and pay off the debt is a part of it. Um, the model for this we saw, um, was in the, uh, industrial park. Um, and the mayor has spoken about this several times. It's been talked about how the history of how the ball got rolling on the industrial park, on the sun, the Sunflower Commerce Park is what I'm talking about, about how the, the city did spend some money initially upfront to build a little bit of infrastructure there to make it attractive to land purchasers. And purchasers pursued that. So, so that's the context that I see that we're talking about here. We're not, um, no one up here is anxious to, to spend money in our, you know, our eyes aren't really big. Like we, we, we just want a park. It's, we're doing it in the context of, or the proposal to move forward on this is, is in the context of what can we do to build that focal point? What can we do to, um, uh, support the, you know, the mayor's vision of, of what Bella could be in the future? Um, it's not that we're wanting to spend money. It, it's, it, I think to characterize that i, is, uh, is disingenuous. Um, and, you know, we, we could, I mean, as a body, if we want to just put the brakes on this and just decide, we're just going to pay off our debt and, and not engage in any, you know, focal point building or anything to, um, you know, draw in, uh, potential land buyers. I mean, we, we could do that. So, um, I guess I will, I, I guess if we want to engage on a discussion on the phase itself, I have more to say, but I guess I'll leave it at that. I'll open it to anyone else that wants to address that issue.
Mr. Mayor?
I have a few comments that I'd like to add. Um, I, I think I've said most of this before, so I'll try to be brief tonight. But, uh, as I look at our master park plan and the vision for that, it's beautiful. I think it would be wonderful to have a park like that. I think it would be a fantastic addition to our community to have a nice big park with all the amenities and features that we would love to have right here in front of city hall. Um, but I'm not going to be voting in favor of moving forward with either one of these proposals tonight from a financial standpoint. I don't think it's the best use of our money right now. I don't think we should be borrowing money to build something that's not an essential. Um, if we do find ourselves with, uh, a need to borrow money to do projects, I think that should be for the essential projects like the $9 million improvements that we may have to pay for, for sewer, or the wood lawn project that I know we're borrowing money to pay for, or the next big street project, or the next big sewer project. Those are essentials. We have to borrow money for those. But this park, it, it'd be a wonderful addition to have, but I don't think it's an essential. And so I'm not in favor of borrowing money for it. And that's my, uh, key concern. I also am just a little bit concerned with the idea of using it to sell the land directly around it. I understand that a gathering spot in a park would have the, the draw of potentially bringing some people into the area. But it, just from a pure investment standpoint, we've heard an estimate that the land around it's worth roughly $100,000. And we're talking about spending a million dollars on a park to sell land that's currently valued at $100,000. And I just don't think that's the right place for us to focus. In fact, I think focusing on that could be a distraction from, from selling the land over in our industrial park. Could draw our attention away from focusing on that. It could draw our staff's attention away from focusing on that. And I think that's really where we need to be focused right now is on selling the land in our industrial park, the land that's already for sale and being marketed, and then focusing on our street projects and, um, sewer improvements. So, that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Um, I'd like to talk about the essentialness of the park. Um, in a way, for a lot of people, I think the park is essential. Um, I think that we are actively trying to gain residents, not only just businesses, but residents to the city. I think, you know, having this park for the residents is, is a huge need. If anybody went to the Fall Fest, you can see that, um, the city has, has outgrown the, the space that's available there for, for the community events. Just the same way they did, they used to have the, the community events at, at the Woodlawn Park and they outgrew that. So they moved to the rec center. Well, they've outgrown that. But then when you, when you start talking about where the growth for residents is in the city, it's, it's coming towards city hall. You've got, you know, a brand new development, a couple of brand new developments on Rock Road. You've got a brand new development on North Woodlawn. And, and so those residents are getting farther and farther away from any kind of city park anyway. Um, so when you're trying to attract new residents to have something like this park there for their everyday use, not just events, but for their everyday use, I think is, is, does make it essential. Um, as far as this proposal, um, this is, this is step one of, of many, many steps, uh, including, you know, the, the point of having the community input. Um, you know, I know we've talked about in, in our workshops about applying for grants and, and things to offset costs and, and help pay for the park. But you can't, you can't begin to apply for grants without having a plan. And, and this is just about getting that plan. And, and, you know, we're going to do everything we can to offset as much cost as we can, um, you know, through grants or, or, you know, donations or, you know, whatever, whatever we can come up with, we're going to do. But we have to have the plan first. So.
Mr. Mayor, I have some comments I'd like to put in the record verbatim, and I have a copy for, for the record here. Um, I think it's well-known, I'm opposed to this concept. Um, and I am voting against this plan. Uh, the city has no business beginning this development until we have a contract with a partner developer. Uh, we will only be building another park if we cannot find a developer to partner with us. Uh, while this is a nice idea, the city has no money for such a park. With a developer, we will have the opportunity for additional tax revenues to pay, help pay for such a park. The citywide survey done in 2016, which was reported in 2017 in January, has some interesting results. I use this data with great hesitancy as the survey lacks any notion of statistical significance and that it has no sense of random pulling and it, as all social science statistics, is very low confidence levels. The confidence level is not stated in the survey. Uh, but the survey shows that less than 40% of respondents supported leverage city-owned land adjacent to the city hall, which is this land that we're talking about. And it's on page 12 of the survey report. That says 60% do not support this. The survey shows that 62.3% feel that we should develop a city park adjacent to downtown. But city hall has some distance from the majority of Bel Air residences. Since we have no downtown, it is difficult to interpret what citizens believed was downtown when answering that question. What was, was that city hall, the rec center, Bel Air park? We just don't know. The survey also says that 60% of residents support the building of a large community park, but that's not this concept. This is the beginning of a development. If we want to consider building in such a large community park, then let's get serious about that. However, we still have no money for such and only less than 40% supported any kind of tax increase for such community park. This proposal is only an effort to try to start development process. There is no proposal out there that doesn't recognize this fact. Even the RFP for these engineering proposals provided the master plan. That concludes the concept of full-up development. People I've talked with say that developers shy away from projects where the city has put in such a beginning development. It limits the developers' options. On page five of the survey shows overwhelming support to address streets and infrastructure. Of five listed items, the results range from 84% to 94% support for infrastructure and streets. I tabulated written responses to the survey and found 420 comments in the survey. There are 41 of them for street improvements, but only 10 concerning parks. This tabulation has bias, as all people in my tabulation will put things in different categories than someone else might do. Uh, but then the entire survey has its bias as well. Reading the parameter of the survey shows a very liberal government status bias of the survey reports, authors. So $4 million cost of this park. I know we're talking about the first phase here. We don't have the money. We don't have the $1 million. We don't have $4 million. There's money the city needs to use towards fixing existing streets and infrastructure. Yeah, we have $300,000, $500,000 budgeted for 2019, but much more is needed. Remember, our streets were neglected for several years due to the budget crisis. Rebuild Woodlawn in a manner to enhance future growth, meet, and meet the needs of Bel Air for the next 30 to 50 years. This is the single best option to spur development in Bel Air. It has a traffic count. We have the average income level. What we don't have is access to development properties. Pay towards the cost of upgrading the water treatment facility. We all know from Councilman Aresov's, uh, reports that CCU is running up against the water treatment capacity problem in the next few years and needs to spend several million dollars to upgrade. Uh, this is an early discussion, so no estimate has been made until this evening. Uh, but, uh, we, how much we need to spend. Our water bills are high enough. Adding cost to such, uh, to upgrade our water bills will just make them higher. This intersection of 53rd and Rock may be the wrong place for such a development. Ketchikan is just across the street at the northwest corner of the intersection. As far as I know, there's no plans for development of any kind on that corner of Ketchikan. There's a most likely insufficient traffic count and rooftops at 53rd and Rock to support retail development at this intersection. State law imposes a debt limit on the amount of debt the city can hold. The format for this is very dynamic and available, and the available amount can change dramatically due to ver, to those variables. About two weeks ago, I asked, I talked with our Director of Finance and Administration, Ted Henry, and he estimated that we have about $4 million cushion that we could borrow and still stay within state law. While money to pay for this engineering work is already, uh, in the capital improvement budget, there is no money to actually build this phase one. The money has to be borrowed. We need to reserve our borrowing limits for emergencies and the Woodlawn project, and which are a cost to be determined. We don't know those yet. And the city is foolish to spend, to pursue a design plan for something that we should not build at this time. $12,000 would be better spent sealing some of our streets to keep them from deteriorating. We have been told by Andrew Nave of Greater Wichita Partnership and Jerry Jones that retail requires two things, traffic count and average household incomes. Bel Air has a, average household income is solid at about $80,000 per year. Traffic count on Rock Road does not support retail. 45th and Rock was three to 5,000 cars per day back in 2012, the last time that I could get data for that intersection. Certainly this is higher now, but it's not three times higher. Um, traffic count at Woodlawn does appear to support retail. The actual, uh, we actually have, it is actually better traffic than the 37th Street has between Woodlawn and, and Rock Road. Uh, north traffic on 37th and Woodlawn was 14,900 cars per day in 2014. And I know we have newer data now, but that's what the data was then. We should not allow ourselves to be enamored with this concept. Our efforts are better spent focusing on getting retail development along Woodlawn corridor. That's where we will see a real development. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, I've done, I've been here quite a long time and we've gone through these things before. Uh, I don't, I still am in favor of, uh, starting the phase one of, uh, this public park gathering space. We, years ago, we used to have Bel Air Days in the little Bel Air Park. We outgrew that. Now we've been to the rec center probably, what, the last 10 years? We've outgrown it. There's no place to put anything. We put stuff in the gym. We scattered around. The parking is terrible. Uh, I'm not saying that we should borrow the money to do this park. We've done parks before. Uh, we're taking this money out of capital improvement plan. And from my understanding in the years past, you can only use capital improvement plans for certain things. You can't just go, oh, we're going to take it out of there and go build a house over here. You can't do that. Uh, but I think this will be an asset, uh, to the city. We have a lot of young people that are living in Bel Air that are, uh, coming up with children. The little parks that we already have now, uh, they're wonderful little parks, but they're in areas that they're, really, there is nothing up here but that swimming pool. And I've said before, if that was me, I'd fill that with concrete and use it as a skate park, but that's beside the point. Uh, so I'm still in favor of this. We've worked on it for many years, even when I was working as water clerk. We were talking about this large park. Uh, a lot of people are going to have grandchildren to bring back here. Uh, and we talked about a dog park. Well, we took that to the public and the public said, no, we don't want it. Not going to do it. It's costing too much. Well, I'm saying that I would vote to go forward with this and then we're still going to put it out to the people and let them decide and have an open house or, uh, town hall meetings or something. But we don't have very good turnouts at town hall meetings. A lot of times people say, well, I'm too busy. I've got to go do this, or I got to take the kids here or there, but they don't show up. So I still feel that this is a good thing to get started. It may not happen in the next 10, 15 years. I may be gone by then. I don't know. Uh, but it'll be something that Bel Air can still be proud of. Uh, this will be 36 years for me. I started out in the city way before we became a city. And it's amazing how far we have really come. All that area on Woodlawn to almost 37th were nothing but wheat fields. We used to have a racehorse track down there where the bank is. The guys went out to the barn and drank their white lightning. Uh, you know, there's a lot of history in this town that can be, uh, told and, uh, betting on the horses and et cetera. So Mayor, I'm still fully in favor of doing this. And like I said, this is coming out of the capital improvement plan. There's only several thing, only a few things that you can spend that for. Uh, if we're not saving money to put it in, we're not taking anything away from the land because all the land we sell, we have been putting it against the principal and interest. That's why we paid, what, 10 million in the last year?
Quite that high, but it was, was it six, seven?
Six, I think. Maybe, I don't remember how much, but it was a, quite a big lot that we paid toward the land that brought those payments way down to what they are now. I remember a couple, oh, it's probably been, what, six or eight years that we raised tra, taxes, among us. I thought people were going to flip over and die when we had to raise those taxes because we kept Robin Peter to play ball. But anyway, I am still in favor of this project going forward. I did have one phone call of, besides the three people that spoke tonight, they didn't call me, but they were here this evening. Uh, I did have one gentleman that had, uh, six children that called and he is not in favor of it. So just for the record, there was, uh, that's the only phone call I got about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Can I ask Ann Stevens a question?
Yeah.
With these two proposals, one from, uh, LK Architecture and one from PEC, is there, do you, have you dealt with both of the firms and, and what's, what's your feeling on, on the two firms basically?
I have not seen the proposals for either of the parks, but I have worked with both LK Architecture and PEC. Both are very qualified firms and both would be capable of doing the work. PEC was, they, they both teamed together to work on the master park plan as well as the master growth plan. So they're both have been instrumental in working with the city and would be capable of, either firm would be capable of this project.
Okay.
So again, tonight, we're looking at hiring a design firm to, uh, move us forward. So again, tonight, we're looking at hiring a design firm to move us forward in the next phase. That, before I ask for a motion, we've heard five different talks up here. And I want to share my thoughts, and I've shared them before, and I'm going to share. This land that we're talking about directly across the street here is the most expensive land this city owns. We pay just on that area over a hundred thousand dollars a year in specials. We have had developers talk to us about that piece of land. Was it three years ago, we had a major developer, or a major retail that wanted to go there? And they heard those specials because there's nothing you can do about those specials. You cannot negotiate out of them. We have to pay them. And they said, we're not going to touch it with a ten-foot pole because of that. So that land continues to sit empty. And we can let it continue to sit empty if that's what you guys want, if that's what your vision is. I've asked you guys to join me in coming up with a vision. I hear a couple that basically say my vision is to have the best damn streets in the world or to be out of debt. I don't know if there's anyone out there that's going to say, ooh, let's move to Bel Air because they have great streets. I don't know anyone out there that's going to say, ooh, let's go move to Bel Air because they're out of debt. You know, my wife and I at home are following, well, for the most part, the Dave Ramsey Plan. A lot of you may have heard of that. In my personal budget, that is my goal at home. Ms. Ramsey is a financial expert, and he talks a lot about while you're in debt, scorched earth, live on rice and beans, beans and rice. That's one of his favorite sayings, if you ever listen to any of his podcasts. And guess what? The city has been living on beans and rice, and rice and beans. A city budget, municipality budget, is way different than a personal household budget. I've said a hundred times, we would not even be discussing this if it meant raising one tenth of, one percent of a sales tax. We wouldn't be discussing it. We would not be discussing this if it meant taking one penny, one cent away from road improvements. This year, we're spending nearly double. We're spending more on road improvements this year than we've ever spent. We continue to not raise taxes. We had a citizen comment earlier today about wiggle room. We've got wiggle room here, people. This is what we call being at a crossroads. You know, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. We can keep doing what we're doing. Like Councilmember Elsoff said, you know, we're going to be out of debt. It's going to be in about fifteen years. My vision is to be out of debt in fifteen years with some retail and commercial, more housing developments. And I'll own it. I'll say it right now. I'll say it on the record. If we're out of debt and it takes fifteen years and all we have is a really nice park, I'll live with that because that is something this community needs. For those of you who were at the Fall Festival, you saw, as been mentioned up here tonight, we have people parking three and four blocks away. It's getting to the point where we're talking about a safety hazard, where it's going to be dangerous for kids to go to our events. If we want to stop all of that and stay right where we are and focus only on one and only thing, and that's being out of debt, and that is the will of the council, I will go along with it. If we want to focus on one and only thing, and that is making Woodlawn, you know, the Taj Mahal of all streets, and that's the will of the council, I'll go along with it. Because as a body, we're up here together to make the decision what is best for this community. I've told you, this is where personally, at home, my wife and I do everything we can to avoid debt, and we're trying to get out of debt, and we're getting pretty close to it, and it's exciting. Here for a city, let's take advantage of this wiggle room because it's exciting, too. And that's why I've been pushing for this park. It's not going to be a four million dollar park. It doesn't affect our debt limit. If we did not, if we put this hundred thousand dollars towards the park, if we did not put it towards the park, guess what? It's still fourteen to fifteen years before we're out of debt. Do we want to be out of debt in fourteen to fifteen years with a bunch of vacant land? Do we want to be out of debt in fourteen to fifteen years or sooner with a really nice park and hopefully some retail? Because developers have told us, A, they're not touching that land. Nothing is going to be built on that land for fourteen or fifteen years until those specials go away. That's why we identified that land. We're talking Phase One here. We're talking tonight about a twelve thousand dollar proposal to get a design firm to come in and tell us what it's going to cost. Phase One, we've talked about, will be the natural gathering spot with a walkway, restroom. I think a splash pad is what we've been talking about. We're taking this in baby steps, to quote Dave Ramsey. We're not building a four million dollar park tomorrow. We're not borrowing four million dollars. We're not changing our budget. We're not raising taxes. We're not taking away from streets. We're not taking away from other projects. We're prudently looking at things that are coming down the pike. And this is an opportunity that is before us. It's obvious that I have some disagreement with a couple of the council members up here, but I want to say I respect you guys. I respect you for your convictions, and I appreciate that we're able to have these I truly do. But it's time, I would just ask that we think, we dream big because we have the opportunity to dream big. So that's why I've been pushing for this for several different reasons that I've outlined here. And I appreciate all the different opinions and ideas and suggestions that we've been talking about. And I've been asking, okay, then what's your idea? How do you want to get, sell the land? How do you want to get out of debt? This is an idea. This is proactive. This is showing our citizens and potential developers that we want to build something nice for them. So that's, those are my thoughts. A lot of people up here kind of shared thoughts that have been shared before, so I wanted to share mine again as well. But again, tonight, we're looking at the two firms who responded to our RFP to come back and report to us. And I'll go on record, if they come back and they report to us a crazy high number, we're not moving forward with it. So again, tonight, I would ask for a motion to, I'm so out of here with, ask for a motion here on item D for the Phase One design of the new public park gathering spot. And we've got the two proposals in front of us.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So I'd like to just talk a little bit about the difference between the two proposals. The LK Architecture proposal, you know, it's, it is difficult to just make a distinction between these two firms and what they're offering based on what Ann had to say about them both being excellent. They're, they're involved in our community here in Bel Air. They're involved in the Wichita area and surrounding cities around Wichita. In going through the proposals, I just wanted to make note, so LK, some examples of work that they have done, and they have in their proposal as just an example of their work. The amphitheater that's over in Andover is an example of something they've designed. The River Vista Downtown, so if you're not familiar with that, if you've gone down downtown Wichita, right next to the river, I think it's just north of Douglas on the west side of the river, I believe. That big apartment complex that's being built there, there's a whole vista that's been constructed along there, and LK was involved in the design of that. The Drury Broadview Hotel downtown Wichita, and again, I think that's hugging up against the river as well. And so there's a, there's a park area along there. They've designed that. So they, they, they can perform. And then if we look at PEC, some of the examples that highlight, and this isn't an exhaustive list of either one, these are just things, all the ones I've mentioned are things that I've seen and, and I'm more familiar with. There's more in their proposal, but I didn't want to give an exhaustive list of everything that they're involved with. So PEC did McLaughlin Park in Valley Center. Now, McLaughlin Park is another park that has a splash pad that is very nice, so that's Valley Center. And that has kind of a similar take or thought on what a splash pad sort of could be in our Phase One. So if you're curious about when we talk about splash pad up here, in my mind, I look to that McLaughlin Park at Valley Center as an example. PEC also did the design work for the Coke expansion when Coke rerouted Thirty Seventh Street. That whole project was, well, PEC had a role in it. I don't know if they did the whole thing or part of it, but they mentioned that in their packet. Madison Avenue Park in Derby, so this council has mentioned Madison Avenue Park. That's the park, that's the ADA compliant park in Derby. It's hugged up against a little creek bed there. They, they built several pavilion buildings for the community there, and then they have kind of a micro splash pad. They have a children's playground that is ADA compliant. That's, for those that don't know, American Disabilities Act compliant park. Got a lot of praise for that park design and how it's, it's a really safely constructed park for children. And then, if I recall, PEC has been involved with our bike plan. Is that right? So, and then, I think it's already been mentioned, but LK was involved in the initial design of the Central Park Master Plan that we're familiar with to this point. In evaluating the two proposals and, and to me, I'm not really looking at, each proposal had a cost associated with it, but I, I don't think it's, when it comes to designing things, design is really important because design sets the tone for the way things are going to be shaped. You're, it's sort of the initial, you know, sets the path. And that if, if big mistakes show up in the design phase, or if you cut corners in the design phase, you know, you can damage your construction or whatever. So I don't, I don't think that, moving forward on this, that we look at whatever the lowest bidder is. I think we need to evaluate the body of work and the capability of each company. I think I've done my due diligence in trying to evaluate based on all the information I could find out, based on the information that's in their packets, physically going to as many of those locations as possible to kind of scope them out and get a feel for the designs overall. Based on all of, all of the information that I've collected, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to motion that we select LK Architecture at a cost of, I believe, so...
No, I do have a question on that. Wasn't, didn't they, aren't they both the same costs on that?
Yeah, yes. LK came in a couple thousand higher after the discussion occurred at the workshop because the, the proposals became public knowledge. They said that they would negotiate. So I would recommend whoever you selected to offer it at not to exceed or at twelve thousand dollars. And that's lower than both of them actually proposed, but whoever you chose, we could take that dollar amount to them, see if they'll do it for that. And, and if they wouldn't, then we could come back to you and discuss if you wanted to go to the second firm or something like that.
Okay, so, thank you. So the, at a cost of, so my motion is to select LK Architecture at a cost not to exceed twelve thousand dollars to design Phase One of the new public park gathering space and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second. Yeah, I'll just say you have the twelve thousand. I mean, both are good firms, so, should that. Are there any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and move on to item E and F are for sewer work. It's important that we make needed repairs and upgrades to our utilities as our budget allows. The 2018 budget contains roughly a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars for sewer repairs and maintenance. Staff feels that since the year is nearly over, and, is this wood up here? No major breaks, that cleaning the mains in Summit Hill in Bel Air Heights, something that we need to seriously consider. In addition, rehabbing about seventy manholes is another repair. Our city engineer, Ann Stevens, is here to answer questions. Or do you have a brief discussion or?
I'm here to answer questions. First off, I do want to let you know that our new dump truck has arrived, so kind of completely off the subject. It is parked down by the police department in the far corner of the lot. If you'd like to take a look at it, swing by on your way home.
I try that.
Oh, but I can. I've got a CDL. So, and I, I don't have the keys tonight, so we can arrange another time for you to come out and take a look. But I did want to let you know that it is here. In previous years, we have had lots and lots of lift station issues. So I've gotten kind of gun-shy about spending significant chunks of our budget to do any sort of rehab until I am somewhat confident, knock on wood, that our system is going to be fine for the year. So now we're in November. We have had no significant issues, knock on wood, and we have a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars to spend. So cleaning the mains is something that we have done every few years. We've chosen a couple subdivisions to focus on, starting with our older ones and moving slowly towards our newer ones. Our staff does go and clean our sewer mains. We do have a sewer cleaner, but it is not very powerful, and it doesn't have a camera on it, so we cannot see into the mains to see their condition. So that's why we come to you, ask... So that's why we come to you asking for approval for Mayor Specialty Services to come through and with a high-pressure jet to do a good scouring of the mains. They also televise them so we can go back later and review the tapes, see where there's breaks, see if there's any protruding sewer taps into the mains that would cause potential clogs, to try and keep our sewer in, in good shape. So we have done several in the past on the, you'll see in the Pearson's Edition, which is kind of in that purplish-blue-red, that was done in 2016. That will be done again next year with the man, or with the sewer line rehabilitation. You gave us money for cured and placed pipe, that's what we're gonna do on that one. We were gonna look at cleaning that this year, but it would have to be cleaned right before the cured and placed pipe, so we didn't want to do something twice and waste the public's funds. So that's why that's not being done. The ones for this year would be Summit Hill, or no, Summit Hill, yeah, Summit Hill, and then, um, I'm blinking out on the name of the, the what?
Beller Heights.
Beller Heights, I'm sorry, I'm blinking out on the name of that subdivision. So those are the two looking for this year, and then we'll just keep moving forward. So that is the report on the sewer cleaning. Manhole, something that we've been trying to get to. We have a lot of old brick manholes that are, have a lot of infiltration coming through the grout that starts to disintegrate. So Mayor Specialty Services comes in and sprays a coating, a cementitious coating on the manhole, which blocks the INI infiltration and inflow from coming into the manhole, which causes increased cost down at CCUA, because we're treating more water that we really don't need to, because it's clean groundwater, so.
And I would point out, this is N-A-Y-E-R, Mayor.
Mayor Austin does not wanna be down in those manholes cleaning now.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a couple of questions.
Please.
First question is on the sewer cleanings. Can, can you describe, you know, when is it more appropriate for the high-pressure cleaning versus the lower-pressure cleaning? What I'm trying to get at is, when do we, how do we make a decision on whether we're gonna use our equipment for it, or whether we're gonna go, you know, pay a third party to do it on our behalf?
Sure. What we started out doing in 2015 and prior to, we have done our low-pressure cleaning throughout the entire city. What we have found, particularly in that Pearson's Edition, there are some lanes that we couldn't get our sewer jet through. Some of them is because you've got the round main, and then you've got the service tap that comes through and protrudes into that main, and so our sewer, our jet was getting stuck. Mayors can get through some of those. There's also tree roots that we, that prevent us from getting through. Mayors can get through those tree roots. But it's, we, we do it, it's just not as thorough of a job. And so that's why we have started going through and hiring somebody to come back. And it's ma, the mains that we want to get cleaned with the high pressure are the older mains. The newer plastic ones, we can get through fairly easy. There's not been as much time for gunk and roots and stuff to build up inside those pipes.
Is there any risk of the cleaning process damaging the older pipes or creating problems that are gonna generate additional expenses for us?
There is some minor risks, especially on the old clay pipes that have disintegrated. It's a very, it's a very low risk, and they usually see those with the television inspection, but to this point, we have not had any issues. Mayor does go, yes, exactly, Mayor does go and put notices on all doors. They do ask that residents close your toilet seat. So if you don't have a properly vented sewer line in your house, you may see some come up through your house, but that's actually, it's just, it's mainly fumes, but it's, it's when we know that there's something that's not properly vented. And so it's kind of a catch-22 on the homeowner's side. But hey, you've got a problem! So, there, there, there's a minor chance, but we haven't had any issues thus far.
Okay, and then my, my last question was on the, the manhole covers, that, or the manhole repairs, the coating that's sprayed on there, is that just to block water, or is it for structural purposes? I was doing just a little bit of Googling, and it looks like there's a whole bunch of different types of service, maintenance, prevention that you can do on these manholes. How did we come up with this as the right type of service to be done on these?
Sure, this is, it is both structural and waterproofing. And this is the main type of service that's available in the area. Mayor has come out and inspected some of our manholes, and this is what they recommended. I certainly don't have the expertise to say A versus B, but this is what they recommended. We've used it in probably a dozen or two dozen manholes so far in Pearson's Edition, and that was before I came to Bel Air, and it's holding up really well.
Do we know what the expected lifespan is on a manhole that's been treated with this product?
I do not have that information, but it's greatly extending the life of what's currently there.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Is, is there, is there any sort of risk to doing this service that could, could cause damage to the sewer system, or, or to the, the mains in any way? Like, is there a potential liability issue if, if this company comes in and does this service? Is it possible they could screw something up really bad, or, can you give me a sense of that?
As I, as I told Mr. Councilmember Smith, there is a very s, minor risk that there's, that they could break a main, we'd see it with a collapse. We have not had that issue. We've never seen that happen as, in our many twenty-plus years of using Mayor for this work. The other, on the other hand, if we don't clean the mains and we continue to have backups in some of these lines, then you're looking at fixing basements where sewage has backed up into multiple basements. So there's, there's kind of a, you know, risks on both sides, if you do or if you don't. But we've had, we've used Mayor for the past twenty-plus years, that they've been in business and have never had issues with them.
Last, last year, we did, uh, two areas, and the year before, you did one area that you found some issues with the one in 2016. Were there any issues discovered in the ones done last year?
To my knowledge, there were, there were a few locations, but not near the number of locations that we had found that first year.
Have we been able to get those areas repaired, or?
Not yet, that's, we're, we're starting that repair next year with the sewer lining. We just don't have the time. We've, we've got funds available, but we don't have the time to get repairs like that put in place before the end of the year.
Okay, all right. But it's in the plans?
Correct.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
You might be aware that these manholes were put in probably in nineteen seventy-two to seventy-three in Pearson's?
Yeah, that's probably fair, if not earlier.
Yeah, I think it was in seventy-two, but I'm not sure. But for them to last this long, that's almost, what, fifteen, sixteen years? And this is just now where we're having to go through to redo those. So I'm thinking it's money well spent for them to last, I mean, you can't buy anything in the last sixteen years anymore, but for that to, because Pearson's is the oldest addition, or the, and then Har, Arthur Heights and, uh, Arthur Heights.
And Aurora Park.
Aurora Park is next. So those houses have been there quite some time, so that's why you're seeing all these dots on your manhole completed and the manhole re, rehabs.
Great questions, and appreciate you being here, but for us this evening are two different items that need separate motions. And Item E is, um, for the cleaning at fifty-five thousand one hundred and thirty-one, then Item F, um, is for the, uh, the manhole at eighty-eight thousand one hundred and sixty-five.
Mr. Mayor? A motion to accept the quote from Mayor Specialty Services for sewer main cleaning and authorize Mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Smith? I move to accept the quote from Mayor Specialty Services for manhole rehabilitation and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Any, uh, discussion and future issues that need to be brought up at this time?
Everybody have a nice Veterans Day.
Yeah, wanna thank all the veterans, and I have no need for an executive session. Anybody else?
No.
Well, I know the Shockers are playing the first game, so we've got...
Go to the home, see if you've won the vote.
So for a, a, a future council consideration, a couple items not to talk about tonight, just wanna throw them out there, is today is election day, and our Bel Air City Council meeting always hits election day, and it will next year and every year after. And I'd like to see if we could see about an alternative for that. Second all, last council in December approved a motion to, or approved a, uh, award for Christmas lights, and there was some confusion about what they actually approved. So I would like to see what the, what the city manager would, would propose we do to fix that, okay? Thank you.
Okay.
And with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned at eight forty-one.